Good evening, everyone. The City Council meeting for the City of Cartersville will now come to order. It'll stand for invocation and pledge.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us all our trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us, lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, but thine is the kingdom, the hour and the glory of every man.
Do you want me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Move along. Keith, we have two emergency reading of the ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. The first one deals with amending the development regulations to allow staff to approve preliminary plaits. Currently, that's a function of the planning commission. However, that's been changing pretty much everywhere around us and in the state in general where staff approves it because all of it is is a 26-item checklist that your plat has to have: the name, the title, the north era, the setback lines, and those type of things. It's not really an item for discussion, so it is recommended by staff for its approval.
So, there's a motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as an emergency reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Go on, Keith.
And the next one is also a change to the plaits. Basically, right now, the clerk of court will not record a plat unless there's a signature from the city on it. The city has never in the past required signatures on easement plaits. So this is designating Randy or a designee in his office to be able to sign off on those easement plaits. And it is also recommended by staff, and for both of these, the emergency purposes are that there are pending plaits that are waiting to be recorded.
Discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve as an emergency reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Thank you. PPP purchase for recruits.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, pro temp and council. This item is for approval for the purchase and repair and PPE, which is turnout gear for any firefighters that will be graduating in about a month. They started in July 2024. We sought quotes from Fire Master and Bennett Fire Products, and we're going with the lowest bid for a total of $17,914. This is a budgeted item and recommended for approval.
Discussion? Not there's a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Thank you. PPP purchase for recruits.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, pro temp and council. This item is for approval for the purchase and repair and PPE, which is turnout gear for any firefighters that will be graduating in about a month. They started in July 2024. We sought quotes from Firemaster and Bennett Fire Products, and we're going with the lowest bid for a total of $17,914. This is a budgeted item and recommended for approval.
Discussion? Not there's a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Thank you. Fibercom.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Fibercom is requesting the authorization to purchase a replacement bucket truck. This bucket truck will take place of our current 40-foot bucket truck that's 21-years-old, replacing with a 45-foot bucket truck from Terex for a cost of $169,973. This was originally approved in September of '22, and we budgeted it in '23-'24 budget year, and then the truck was delivered a few weeks late, so it's in the current budget year. So we're requesting for this to be paid out of the Fibercom reserve fund, and we recommend this for your approval.
Discussion? If not, there's a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Thank you. Second quarter?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, pro temp and council. This is the second quarter of 2024 Motorola invoice from Berto County. We submit this and request payment for it. It's utilized mostly by police and fire, but also Fibercom, gas, and other departments. The amount of the invoice is $38,699.20.
Discussion? If not, there's a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carry.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Yes, sir. The next one is the Architectural and Engineering Services Agreement for the CPD firing range. This is agreement with CPL to move forward with the construction documents that we'll need to move forward and build a firing range. We're asking your approval for this.
Discussion? If not, there's a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you. And the last one I have, sir, is Construction Manager at RIS. We had nine qualified bids. We interviewed six of them with the police personnel, and we're recommending Hogan Construction Group to move forward. We have the A1 documents, and so then the city attorneys reviewed those.
Discussion? If not, there's a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Letter of intent for Advance Sports Group.
Good afternoon. Parks and Recreation is seeking permission to move forward with a letter of intent to do business. Once we have this, they will do a formal contract, but that's just the way they do business. But we will be using a Sourcewell contract, which is a co-op with pre-bid contracts, which we are members. I did include the Sourcewell information in the packet. Advance Sports Group is the contractor for Shaw turf in the state of Georgia, and I have a kind of a sole source from Shaw stating that they are the only ones that we can use for this. The scope would include all site work, drainage, curbing, turf installation, fencing, and the concrete work and outside pads around the backstop. And the price for the ASG portion of the project will be $1,088,1617. This is a budgeted item, and I do recommend approval.
Discussion?
So just for clarification, just because people don't see the picture on the screen, just give us a very short synopsis of what this project is so we can just kind of...
Sure. This is looking at the conversion at Dillinger Park on Fields 1 and 2. We will basically be turning both of those fields into softball stadiums. They'll have the wraparound seating, and this portion of the project is the actual turf fields themselves. And ASG, like I said, they are the sole provider for Shaw, which is everybody around us has a Shaw, and I really don't want to go in a different direction than Shaw. So this is what that mock-up would look like. I do have the canes in both center fields, and like I said, we will have our logos on the outfield walls, and I mean, it'd be two gorgeous stadiums.
And this is for...
This is for kind of... This is our push when we look at our girl sports. Obviously, our high school and middle school will play there, but it also, for all of our girls' programs, will be played in this, and also, you know, I believe it would definitely bring some weekend tournaments that have in these kind of facilities will up that, too.
Great. Thank you.
Outstanding. Any more discussion? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Keith, you got the next two.
Good evening. So...
And, pardon me. At this time, there's a motion to add four more items to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Carry on, Steve.
Thank you. So the U.S. Department of Justice requires us to do a federal annual report within 60 days of the end of our fiscal year. So I'm requesting approval. We received, including interest in sale of equipment that we have sold, $527,834.48, and we spent, Jesus, $283,433 last fiscal year. And I'm requesting that y'all approve and authorize the mayor pro temp to sign the annual report.
Discussion? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to authorize the mayor pro temp to sign the federal report that you're amending for.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carry.
Thank you.
Next one, chief.
So the next one, the Cherokee Judicial Circuit District Attorney's Office requested that we donate vehicles with emergency equipment to them because they don't have anything right now, and what they do have is junk. So I'm requesting to donate a 2015 Dodge Durango's that are equipped with emergency equipment to the district attorney's office. They use these vehicles to go to serious crime scenes that they're required to go to, and, you know, sometimes they have to respond to the interstate where there's motor vehicle accidents with death, and they need these vehicles to actually keep them safe. These vehicles were purchased in 2015 with federal asset forfeiture funds, and it's a permissible use for us to donate it to a law enforcement agency or a district attorney's office. So I'm requesting approval on that.
Mayor Pro Temp, also, a part of the resolution will be to clear the vehicle surplus so we can transfer them to the...
Any more discussion? Just one question. They will be unmarked cars?
They're unmarked, yes, sir.
If not, a motion on the floor.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Public hearings, item number 11. City of Carlsville M&amp;O milage rate.
Honorable Mayor, Pro Temp, and Council, the City of Carlsville M&amp;O milage rate for 2024 will be set tonight at 2.783 mils. The property taxes received for the Carlsville M&amp;O property tax collections are used for general city government operations, i.e., police, fire, recreation, public works, et cetera. The proposed 2024 milage rate is 2.783 mils and is the rollback rate. There are no required public meetings to be held, and I recommend the approval of the Carlsville M&amp;O property tax milage rate of 2.783 mils for 2024.
At this time, any discussion? If not, we have...
Need to ask if there's anybody in the public that wants to speak.
Yes, anybody in the public want to speak? On this particular milage rate for the city?
I think I'm on for number 14, but it also applies to number 11. So number 14.
Okay. We're not quite there yet. We'll be there in a couple more items.
That's okay. We're kind of like the vote.
Item number 12, city business improvement milage rate.
Oh, you need to have a vote. Number 11.
So there's no discussion, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Second.
Second. Slow it down. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carry. Here we go. Next one.
Honorable Mayor, Pro Temp, and Council, the next item I have is the Carlsville Business Improvement District or Bid, milage rate being set at .732 mils for 2024. The Carlsville bid is made up of the downtown Carlsville Business District. These businesses owners have been self-assessing property taxes for many years to raise funds for the use in the downtown area. The Downtown Development Authority works with the local businesses to use the funds to make improvements in the downtown area. The DDA Board requests that the City Council approve of the recommended bid's property tax milage rate of .732 mils for 2024. This is also the rollback rate. I recommend approval of the Carlsville Business Improvement District property tax milage rate of .732 mils for 2024.
Okay, now, council having the discussion. If not, there's an open to the public for comments. Seeing that here's none, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Number 14. 13.
Honorable Mayor, Pro Temp, and Council, the next item I have is the Geo Parks and Recreation Bond Property Tax Milage Rate to be set at .383 mils for 2024. The citizens of Carlsville approved a referendum in November of 2014, authorizing the city to issue bonds to be used to pay for renovations and improvements to the Parks and Recreation Building and properties. The bonds were issued with a 10-year payback period. In order to make the scheduled bond payments, the city is assessing a property tax milage of .383 mils, which is the rollback rate for 2024, and this is also approved by the citizens. This will be the last year for this bond tax, if you will, and it will be paid off as a 1-1 2025. I recommend approval of the Carlsville Geo Parks and Recreation Bond Tax Milage Rate of .383 mils for 2024.
Counsel, you have a discussion. If not, we'll open up to a public discussion. Seeing that here's none, we'll close the public discussion, and there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Final item. Honorable Mayor, Pro Temp, and Council, my next item is the Carlsville School System milage rate set at 14.5 mils for 2024. The Carlsville City School System has recommended to their board to adopt the milage rate of 14.5 mils for 2024. The rollback rate for the school system for 2024 is 12.884 mils. As a result, the rate of 14.5 mils is considered to be property tax increase of 12.54% over the rollback rate. Furthermore, the school system is required to hold three public hearings, which they have. The three meetings were held on August 1st at 10:00 a.m., August 1st at 6:00 p.m., and August 8th at 5:30 p.m. The City Council approves the school board's recommended tax milage rate for city residents where all the property taxes collected are used by the Carlsville School System. I recommend approval of the Carlsville City School System property tax milage rate of 14.5 mils for 2024.
Mayor Pro Temp, before you open it further, I just wanted to remind council, pursuant to the charter of the City of Cartersville, your role in the approval of the school milage rate is that you approve whatever is sent up to you by the school board. It is the school board's power and authority to determine that amount. Y'all just legally have to approve that so it can be assessed. You don't really have any discretion in this matter.
That being said, we're opening up to a public... Would you please state your name and address?
My name is Joyce Higgins, and I live in Ward 3, and it's 11 Dury Court in Waterford. And I have never spoke with you before. I've been in Carlsville for over 20 years, but now I see a disturbing thing that's happening to the seniors in the city of Carlsville. And I've asked my daughter to speak for me, but I'm asking you to look at us seniors and keep our dignity so that we can pay our bills and keep our homes, which we've paid for for many years, and just remember that we are people, even though we've got old and we have responsibilities, but what comes with age also comes with medical conditions, which drains our savings. All right, this is my daughter Cynthia Nguyen, and she's going to speak for me.
Also, would you state your name and address, please?
Okay. My name is Cindy Nguyen, and I live in the county of Carlsville, and I am Joyce's daughter, one of her daughters. I am a resident of Car... She's a resident of Carlsville, and she's in Ward number 3, as we had stated. She's asked me to read this message because she does have some concerns, but these are not just concerns of my mom. There's many other people that I have spoken to that are my mom's age, even higher, and some that are just a little bit younger. We are very, very concerned regarding the continuous increase of the financial hardships due to the increase of taxes that they are receiving each and every year. I know this may not seem like much to some, but to many, it's becoming devastating. Last weekend, I tried to do some research so that I be prepared for today. According to my research, according to Census Reporter and also World Population, in Carlsville, there is approximately between the ages of 70 and 79, it's a 6% population. For those that are 80 and above, those ranges were from 1.3 to 1.8. That is a very small minority of people that we are representing. I need to state for accuracy, it was very hard for me to determine whether these were individuals that were living in assistant living or stolen their homes paying property taxes, or those that were considered in the city versus in the county, but these numbers were accurate. I'm sorry, my technology is... Anyways, sorry. But depending on the resources, each and every one of the resources that I received, it did show that the percentages of the seniors in our community is quite small. My mom is 82-years-old, and like she said, she has been a part of this community for over two decades. Many people that are in this community have been here for generations, as far as a lifetime, or they have raised their families. And I am so sorry. Many of these families that we are regarding that are considered to be seniors have been working, and they worked in this community. They have established businesses in the past. They have raised their families proudly, but they are having difficulty right now. I went to the school board meeting last week with my mom, and it was a great presentation as far as why their adjustments were needed for the milage rate. But the one thing that was non-announced was that some of our surrounding school districts has many more schools to find ways to support. And I'm sorry, I am at this point with my computer, not able to continue with my facts, but you will know that in Bolden County, I believe there was 33 schools. In Berto County, there are 19 schools. In Gordon County, I believe there were 10 schools. And we are very proud of our school district here in Carlsville. We have five schools, which includes the preschool. The asset to that is we should be able to find some really creative ways of sponsoring and supporting our teachers without always doing the traditional raising the taxes. And that is becoming an issue for many, many seniors. Sorry.
What I don't understand is...
So my concern is this. When mom had brought her tax forms to me and said that her taxes were going to increase again, since I live in the county, I could not understand why she was not getting the benefits of the county. I know you are aware, for those that are 65 and above, there is a $60,000 discount for the property assessed value. However, that never increases with age, whereas if you live in the county, at 65, you get $60,000. If you are 75, you get an $80,000 discount, and if you are 80 and above, it's $200,000. I am the first street in the county, so my neighbor, that literally lives one street over, as a senior citizen, has to pay a lot more taxes because they are within the city schools. I also did my investigation and research regarding the counties that are immediately surrounding us. Many of them have programs to assist their seniors or to give them more of a discount to help with these burdens. But again, it does not seem to be in Carlsville City. So what I'm asking, and what my mom is asking, to please understand. Our seniors are trying very hard to stay independent in their homes. The population of seniors, especially my mom's age, that are 75 to 82, is very small. We have many, many businesses we are welcoming into our communities, such as hotels, entertainment, industry, the movies. There's got to be a way of finding an alternative way to help alleviate the taxes for these seniors, if nothing else. You have disabled people who are unable to go out and get another job. You have seniors who cannot go get another job. Many of them are taking care of spouses who have chronic illnesses. So I'm asking you to please, tonight, before you just approve this, remember, every one of those numbers, there's a digit, and every one of those digits represents a person in your community that is truly hurting. Every single year, for at least five years now, there has been an increase, and it's saddening me when I go to the senior centers, when I go to grocery stores, when I go to church, when I'm listening to my mom's friends literally telling me they have to sell their homes because they can't do it anymore. They have to sell their cars. And the worst one of all is when they gave up their phone because they're trying to find ways of reducing their expenditures per month to be able to keep up. They're not asking for charity. Many of them can't come out at night. That's why they're not here. But they have given me their support to please, to let you know, we've got to do something. These are folks that have been with us. They made Carlsville great, but we're forgetting them. And please, find a different way of always just assuming that the seniors in our community can keep paying the prices. Their houses have skyrocketed. Most of their homes have been paid off for years, and they're having to refinance just to pay their bills. Now they have mortgages again, and they have fixed incomes. Social Security doesn't go up. Medical bills don't go up. They just keep going up, and we're losing this population quickly. I know it was mentioned at the last meeting that I attended that if you increased this this year, if they don't need it the following year, they'll freeze it. But for many of our seniors, that's not possible because many of them have health issues, and they won't be with us in a year or two. So please consider that. They want to live in dignity. They want to stay in their homes, and we've got to find a way of helping them. It's a small population, but if Berto County can do it, so can the city. You guys are a great and amazing community, but this is one area that we need to truly, truly concentrate on and say thank you to our seniors for everything they've offered us through the years. Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to say something. The Carlsville County, they respect their seniors, and they show their respect by giving them discount. The city of Carlsville is not showing respect to their seniors, and they're not giving us any discount. We were always there for you guys. Nine of you, we were there for your families. I saw some of the children that I started supporting the school system. They have gone through the school system. They graduated from college. Now they have families of their own. That's how long I've been supporting the school system, but I cannot afford it anymore. But I don't want to lose my dignity. I'm a very proud woman, and I've always paved my way, and I'm asking the city of Carlsville to please respect the seniors and help us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I touched my heart, though.
I'm gonna, that touched my heart, those, uh, my name's Jason Trainer. And I, I'm from, uh, far away and, uh, back from northern New York. And when I hear those two old ladies that are struggling with paying their bills, I agree that we should look at not raising taxes. I was gonna talk about the power plant, but this is more important. When our most vulnerable, uh, people, seniors, can't pay their bills, then we need to stop raising taxes on the hardworking people. People that that just live off Social Security. Back home, um, I saw it firsthand. People struggling paying their bills. And when I read that Georgia Power is making triple, or double the profits underneath this power, nuclear power plant and the people, those two ladies, can't pay their bills. It sad my heart to hear that. Because I agree that we're all human beings. We're not just citizens of this country. They need respect. They, I asked the seat council members, hold off of raising the taxes. Hold off of putting more burden on those old ladies. They are crying out from their heart and say, we can't afford it. And if other counties in Georgia respect the seniors, why can't Carousville do the same thing? We should stop the tax breaks of trying to lower the tax rate when we have a surplus. Because those seniors don't get a surplus. They don't get a crease in their, in their income. Their income goes down. And as representatives of Carousville, we need to look out the interest of the most vulnerable people in this community. And those ladies are. For me, I help out as much as I can. I help out the homeless community. I firmly believe that every individual has worth. Every individual deserves to be listened to. They deserve to hear their cries. And those ladies, they just can't afford it no more. They're at the last straw of trying to pay their electric, trying to put food on the table, trying to just pay their, their bills. And we need to look out for those individuals. And I, I, I thank you for telling your story. Uh, because people struggle in this city. Uh, people, not everyone makes seventy thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars. They're not high incomers. They actually live in the bottom, down here. As a community that's grown, as a community that's grown businesses, like I said, we need to stop the tax breaks because it doesn't benefit. Those two ladies right there, they don't get a surplus, they get a decrease. And if we're gonna represent, bring respect back to this community, the respect needs to go towards those ladies. They're crying out saying, guys, please hear me. I cannot afford it no more. So I asked all the seat council members and the mayor, vote it down until we can fix the income crisis in Carousville, Georgia. They have a voice. They're not out there, they're back here. And please listen to their voice. Because they're pre- they're human beings first. Like I said, they're not citizens of this country mainly. They are human beings and they need to be listened to. And I, that, that story touched me. And I'll do everything I can to help out people in this community. The homeless community and people that are struggling. Because one hand lifts up another hand. You know, as we're a community of faith, we are a community that lifts up hands that can't lift up themselves.
And so, your summation is what?
What's that?
Your summation.
I don't, I don't understand.
Your final statement.
Uh, my statement would be is listen to those two ladies' hearts and vote down the, a tax increase.
Thank you very much.
Can I say something?
Yes.
First of all, I'm a senior as well. So I'm sixty-six years old, so I'm probably a little bit behind you. And hopefully y'all gave this same appeal to the school board. Because that's where this has to come from.
We did.
Yeah, we can't, we can't, uh, increase senior exemptions for the school board. They're separately elected body, they make their own decisions. We have no, we cannot turn this down by state law. We're required, it's basically a rubber stamp once they send it to us. So when you come to us and speak to us, although it's nice to hear, and as a senior, I'd like more exemption than what I've got. But that's gotta come from the school board, it can't come from us.
We did talk to them.
Yeah, okay.
I, but the thing is, I don't know if I could, if I'm allowed to speak from this position, but it's just heartbreaking because it's not just with the school exemption, it's just the assessed value of their properties. So, and I'm speaking for myself right now, like, because I represent my mom, but I'm very familiar with so many seniors that are truly making some very difficult decisions in this community. And we as a community should, we should be encouraging independence. But so many of them are having to give up, move in with their family if they're lucky enough to even have them. Many of them are having to go into assisted living. And it just, there's just, there's not that many of them that are seventy-five and eighty that are living independently. So whether it's through the school board or even through the, through the mileage rate of the future, please consider that if Barto County can give a very wonderful discount to their seniors, to please do, try to do the same in the city. Because there's only one street separating myself to my neighbor who's in the city. But there's a big difference in the discounts. And I'm just asking for you to consider that in the future because there are true lives. And it's not just the seniors, there's so many in this community that are needing help. But every single day, the taxes are going up and up and up. Please just consider that.
I'd like to know why the county got the discount. And everyone in the city has seen it, did not. When I moved here, I thought I moved into Barto County. I didn't know that you were gonna separate this county from the city. And the city was more industrious and not family oriented. And this is what's happened. I see all these businesses being built and restaurants and, and everything being built. But, but what happens to the seniors and the families that started it way back when? Right? Please, please, consider us with the same discount as the county. We really need it. It's not, we're not begging, we're just asking that you do be fair to us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Other than more comments? If not, we'll close this part of the public comments and have a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Thank you. Now, we have our we have three more items added on the agenda. Uh, Tom, you wanna go now, you wanna wait till they, yeah? With your, your, your final statement?
I'm a mayor pro temp and counsel. Tonight, we will be reviewing the financial report for June two thousand and twenty-four and comparing it to June twen- two, two thousand and twenty-three. I want to also remind you too that this, uh, report that I've been giving on a monthly basis is on, being presented on a cash basis. As the year-end close process is completed, financial reports will change due to changes made to the reflected modified accrual method of accounting. Items such as depreciation expense, bond accruals, accrued revenues, fixed assets will be added due more than those, just those few items. First of all, in the general fund, revenues increased over last year by nineteen point six million dollars. Expenses increased by seven point nine million dollars. Two areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis. Local option sales tax increased by seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Billing permits and inspection fees decreased by five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. The water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last year by two point two million dollars. Expenses increased by fifteen point two million dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues decreased from last year by ten point five million dollars. Expenses decreased by nine point seven million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, decreased capital expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and increases in the transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by five point two million dollars. Expenses increased by three point eight million dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund, revenues increased over last year by a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, while the expenses decreased by twenty-six thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased cap- operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by three hundred and eighty thousand dollars and expenses decreased by seventy-four thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues decreased over last year by eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Expenses increased by a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And our cash position for the month of June two thousand and twenty-four, and again, this is maybe preliminary, but I'll go ahead and give them anyway. The unrestricted funds decreased, while the restricted funds also decreased. SPAS two thousand and fourteen balance is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, fifteen dollars and twenty-three cents. SPAS twenty twenty balance is thirteen million, sixteen thousand, sixty-two dollars and twenty-three cents.
I'll stand. Any comments?
Just about, wanna remind the mayor and council, obviously the large number you see in the general fund, a lot of that is due to the investment that was made in industrial park. And that money, that sixteen plus million that was made on that return on investment is keeping the property taxes down by out, helping us build the fire station in Carter Grove as well as helping to pay for the recreation center. So that is where that money's being used to pay for.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. So now we have three items added to the agenda and we'll go with, uh.
Yeah, mayor pro temp, the first one is a, uh, resolution to authorize me to, uh, run the legal ads for the September fifth meeting, um, where you will hold a public hearing concerning the abandonment and, um, disposition of Mimosa Lane. If you're not approving it or anything, you're just authorizing me to run the legal ads for y'all to have a public hearing, after which y'all will then make your decision.
Motion to, for the authorization.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry, that's done.
The next item is a standard deed of dedication for, uh, Valvoline. They're located at, um, Dixie Avenue in Cherokee. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Final one?
Yes, final item is a contract performing services. This is with Edouard Bush School and only in Bar- Carousville Barto Tourism. This, uh, or the city will contribute eight thousand dollars for my tourism product development funds to its organization, is recommended for your approval.
Comments, a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Anything else coming for the council at this time? If not, there's a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?